Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, April 22nd, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Thank you. Just a reminder, we have no work session tomorrow. We're going to the courts for the naming of the victim witness room. And we're here to answer any questions that you have on the budget.
No presentation?
Sir?
No presentation?
No, sir.
My one question was that, we talked about it earlier, that there was a number that the schools had asked for for paraprofessionals. That was an unknown question, what the number was.
On a document that's dated February 6th, it appears that it's 1.44, but David's here, and David could answer that question.
Ted Ericson? What was that?
I asked him what the number was that you were asking for for paraprofessionals, what the amount was.
Paraprofessionals?
Yeah. He said what the document has is 1.44.
It would have been on how many we want to replace, you know, whether we're talking just kindergarten or whether we're talking all of paraprofessionals.
How many?
While we're looking at that, could... Ms. Wright, why you're looking at those numbers?
Say again?
While you're looking at those numbers, Mayor, ask a question regarding to the paraprofessionals.
Absolutely.
Okay, then. One of the things I think that we're looking at the number of paraprofessionals that we would have in the schools, and whether or not we would need some additional ones, because teach people ratios have changed. And I know there's been some regrouping and reorganizations going on in all of the schools. We want to make sure we have enough to meet accreditation standards and all. And the person who can really give us some insight on, in terms of their needs, would be the superintendent, who has the job of assigning the however. So maybe you could give us some information on that.
No, that's fine.
Okay?
Well, he's got the numbers, it was 1.44 million on the...
By the need, by financing.
That sounds like kindergarten, and that's about one for every two classes, because there'd be a total, there's 59 kindergarten classes. 1.4 would allow for probably about one for every two classes, that would not be one in every class.
So that would be the ratio.
I think it says on the handout that John gave us there that it was 30. Is that David?
That's how it was.
That's David. Speak for him.
40 people is 1.4 million dollars?
That's what it's...
That's a whole list?
PIO, as the vocational evaluator, that's not just...
So 1.4 should take your auto pay off?
Yeah, it should.
But, Dr. Fisher, one of the things too, we have to bear in mind, there is a different ratio for students with special needs. As for those that are in regular classrooms, there is a different ratio that goes along for the number of needs there, too, isn't it?
Special need pairs we have, because we're required to have those. But those are still here. So are the preschool, so are the preschool, but those are the only places where we have what we call paraprofessionals teaching assistants.
That's right.
The only classrooms they're in at this time are preschool classrooms that are just required to stay in there. If you were to count all the paraprofessionals that have been removed from the school system, what would last five years? Way over.
So where we at now? I apologize for being late. Are we discussing what a request from the schools to, for the paraprofessionals?
I asked what the number was.
The numbers?
What the number was, and he got the sheet that he got from the...
1.4 million.
1.44 is what it is.
There's other positions in that line.
Okay. What about the other, the teachers? The 18 teachers?
That's in the neighborhood, because, you know, these are rough figures, it depends on who we hire. But we're looking at about 1.2, 1.3 million.
For the 18 teachers?
That's right.
And 1.4 for the paraprofessionals?
It wouldn't be that high, because there's other positions in there, if you read that line. There's more positions in that line.
What Brian is passing out came from David.
And you'll see that it's dated on the bottom, February 6th.
Here.
There's four other positions in that line.
Which, that is the, yeah, that's the 1.44, yeah, it says attorney, PIO, vocational evaluator, assistant tech, specialty, and then 30 instructional assistants. So that's all of them. But that does not include... Right. And where are the 18 teaching positions?
They're not in there because we weren't having the discussion. This is a fairly old document.
They are in here.
And you say that's about 1.4 million roughly for those?
1.2, 1.3, it depends on how much experience they have. But we don't know exactly what we, what it would cost us until we hire the folks. But it's in that ballpark.
The 1.4 would encompass who?
The 1.4, it would be the 30 instructional assistants, help out with kindergarten, but there are also four other positions in that line.
The second line, under human resources.
The third here.
We have another document that David did in January, it's got a different number, but it's a smaller number. Good. Well, let's show it to David. What's the, under human resources, what's the...
Those are employees, if, full-time employees, that have not received vacation, any kind of vacation pay, because they are, because they are 10 months and not 12 months.
Rosalyn is going to show David another document from them that's January 26th, it's got 30 and 960,000.
Done next week. Yeah.
What was that one? That was for 900,000?
Yes, sir.
For the same line item or plus these?
I'm getting a signal that we can't pick up David on the microphone. Sir?
Here.
So to get 30 instructional, and the 18, you're talking 2.2, roughly 2.7 million dollars to be able to do both of those.
But where's that coming from? 2.2?
The 1.4 here for the 30 assistants, and these other three positions here, and then he said to...
I think he's got the 30, or what would you say, 600,000? 960,000. 960,000.
Because there are four other positions in that 14, in that 1,400 figure.
Yeah, but that's...
We're talking about... So you're just talking about wanting to fund this, paraprofessionals?
Paraprofessionals.
That was the original question, that was my question, I'm telling you, my question was about, was about the paraprofessionals.
Paraprofessionals, okay.
And that number is 900,000? The 18 teachers here, if you had to prioritize, if we couldn't do both, which one of these are more important? Funding the 18 teachers or funding the paraprofessionals? Or am I putting you on...
I can't speak for the board right now. I have nine board members.
Understand.
Where are the 18 teachers?
For me, personally, immediate effect would be the teachers, because of SOL scores. Those are absolutely critical. But long-term, paraprofessionals, you can argue either one, and I would not want to speak for my board, I've got nine board members.
What are the teachers for?
Excuse me?
18 teachers.
They're right.
They sat in on the school board meeting the other night, and these were the must-need...
We don't have that.
They're copied, they're taped for them.
Or make decisions when you don't have the information.
Again, what Rosalyn is passing out is a document that we got from David, that's dated in January, the date's on the bottom. And look at the third line from the top.
It's a copy, just for everybody.
Okay.
30 additional instructional...
Yes, ma'am.
Instructional assistants.
Okay.
Let's see that.
Okay, they're broken in two different lines on this one.
Right, they're broken, these are two different documents, two different dates.
960 for the 30, and then 480 for the other four.
Right.
Thank you.
That's my white suit.
I got you, I see.
You see it here?
So he wants 960 to get 30 additional.
The document on teachers is not included in this document. We didn't even include the 180 teachers, because it would have pushed this thing up another 12 million dollars.
180 teachers?
Yeah, it's about 180 teachers, and these are very rough figures, you're talking 12 million dollars. That's how much we've cut out of our budget, folks. We've got 180 teachers out of our budget, and 90 paraprofessionals, in addition to lots of other people. Because we've got a state that has cut 15 million dollars, and at the end of the day, I have to balance that budget.
So over, how long a period has this been since you had that down, the last five years, four years?
No, I'd say, Mayor Wright, all of it, if you want to go back to everything, probably six years, maybe. It'd be seven when we started. With not knowing, I'm not prepared to get into all this, because I didn't know I was going to be sitting here tonight, I was just sitting over there. So I'm giving you very general figures. About that far back, I would have to look at our...
That's based on your projectory of the number of positions you will need?
Those are critical positions, that came from Dr. Fisher. Because as we were preparing for SOLs, going back over this year, she said, "Man, we just need these, we gotta get some positions back." The most critical ones are the math, are the middle school social studies. Because we got a compliance issue, because we don't have enough teachers, and the state's saying, "We'll get, we'll let you go by this year, but you gotta put those three people in next year." Then come the high school math teachers, I think there are two of them, I'm going from memory, folks, because I don't have that sheet in front of me.
She's getting the copy.
I think there are two, two math teachers on the high school in that sheet. I believe there's one high school English on the sheet, or it could be history, again, I haven't seen the sheet for a while, there's one at each elementary and two at Simonsdale. So I know the sheet fairly well. And those are the ones, those are just critical positions, you know, that we're going to, we're going to need. I mean, we've got to start building back one of these days, folks. That's, that's, that's why this issue of surplus comes up, the surplus is a result of cutting teachers. You can't go back and hire teachers with surplus money, that's how you got the surplus money. And with, the budget is unstable as it's been for the last five years, you can't go back and start hiring a bunch of people, because I don't want to turn around and put them back out on the street, because that just puts shockwaves through an organization.
Yes, sir. What, I see it's almost a million dollars here on something under IT called a PC laptop refresh?
That's just, that's what the PC people use for replacement, Mr. Moody. I know it sounds kind of...
I mean, you know, my, my question would be, every budget has choices.
Right.
Given the choice between those paraprofessionals and the laptop replacement.
Well, I'll take the, we gotta get people back, we gotta start, the, once the budget stabilizes, we need to get people back in the school division. This one, this and the pairs are the two most important things, yes. These are the most important things.
So I say 162,000?
Yeah, the highest, in response, Mayor Wright, the highest priority on that list are the middle school social studies, because we have to have those. Next would be the high school math position, next would be the high school social studies position, then up to at least one more teacher at Simonsdale, then back to the middle school science position, and then the elementary teachers. But that's, that's a drop in the bucket from what we've lost.
Now, you say the state's mandating this, they're telling you, hey...
The three, the three, that we have to fix the social studies issue, it's a scheduling issue in the social studies department at the middle schools. They said they'd give us a pass this year, but we need to put those three people back in next year, one of these middle schools, so we can schedule it the way the state has to a state testing. And the way we had them blocked, and they said, "No, they don't, they don't want it done that way." We've tried to pinch it every way we can.
So that was a result of you bringing the things down, trying to be within the budget, and now they're questioning some of your techniques with trying to consolidate...
Some of our strategies, right.
Some of your strategies.
Try to operate with less people.
But you have to be also cautious in terms of which area you pull it from, because it affects your accreditation.
We have to have, we have...
All the way through.
If we lose more people, we will be up against accreditation issues, yes.
The current budget that you're planning on...
I'm not sure which budget we're talking about in fairness.
I don't even know how to ask this question. Do you have a budget that you think...
This came, this, this, this came up after the budget was pretty much put together, our budget, we put it together off Christmas time, right after Christmas. This is an issue, we've always known we've been down teachers. The issue with the social studies teachers came up since then, just recently, as we've been preparing for SOLs. The math teachers, it's just looking at, as we've gotten down at crunch time, how big our math classes are in the high schools. I'm going to Wilson one at Norfolk.
So this came up all of a sudden? The need for these teachers?
Dr. Fisher brought the extreme concern to me, we've always had a concern that we're down teachers, we're down 180, so we're down teachers, but this is especially urgent, that we get these positions back in, because it's just crowded, just high numbers. And it's been stated that our class sizes are below the state average, well, when you have as many at-risk children that we do, if we, if we staffed our school at the state average for class sizes...
We wouldn't get that.
Big problem.
But a significant impact is on state accreditation standards, if you are too far off.
The one with the social studies, Ms. Randall, is a, is a scheduling issue, but we're, we're short there.
Sure.
And because you've got people in certain, you can't just pull from anywhere.
That's right.
The original budget that the board put together, we had about 15 million, that was a budget to show what had been lost over the years. It did not include the 180 teachers, because that would have made it, instead of 15 million dollars, about 27 million dollars. And I don't know how far out the people want us to get. I mean, it is surreal how far we are down with the current proposed budget from city administration. If that goes into effect compared to five years ago, the school division will be trying to operate with 26 million dollars below where we were five years ago. 26 million. Of which, about 15 comes city council, about 15 comes in the state, and about 11 from city council, if the current budget is...
Okay, so what was your pleasure in asking? What's your original?
I'm trying to get to the number for the paraprofessionals, because in my conversation with some board members, that was the most impressive thing. And I don't want to cloud it or muddy it with all the stuff, but I was trying to get to the number for paraprofessionals, see if we could find a way to get the paraprofessionals back.
Okay.
That was my goal. Now, we messed around and clouded with a bunch of other stuff and lose sight, and, you know, you can, you can, you can, you know, lose the war, because you spun all your bullets in one battle. So my battle right now is, is the paraprofessionals. Period. To try to, try and make that happen.
What's the critical piece about the teachers? I'm kind of concerned.
That's the first I'm hearing of that. I was, I was, I was...
Well, what's the higher priority, the paraprofessionals or the teachers?
Right now, as I sit here speaking as a superintendent, not for the board, I've got nine board members that all have different ideas. For me, right now, as going into next year, the most critical is those teachers.
How are you going?
But the pairs are critical, too. We've got a lot of critical needs right now.
So the teachers would be a higher priority?
I would say, right now, for me personally, looking at SOL scores, seeing our staffing, that would be a higher priority right now. If you ask our kindergarten teachers, they wouldn't agree with me.
That's right.
Okay, so if we're going to do one, do you rather have teachers than the paraprofessionals?
I'll probably have some board members that'll kill me, because they want to see the paraprofessionals, but as superintendent and looking at accreditation, I'm more concerned about those teaching positions right now.
And a price tag on that?
That was 1.3 for those.
And that's a very rough figure, I can't, you know, because it depends on how much experience they come with.
Right.
Well, if you've got math teachers in there, you might have to pay more for them, you know, for their experience and stuff, I don't know.
And how many teachers are these?
18. That's on this sheet?
Yeah.
And there's no way we can do the teachers and the paraprofessionals, I mean, if they need them?
The teachers and the paraprofessionals is two, you're talking 2.4 million dollars, roughly?
Yeah. And those are very rough figures. Ballpark.
No, I think we can find the money.
So 2.4 million takes care of him personnel-wise with both?
That's right, that needs to be there.
I mean, we might as well face it, if our school is in jeopardy, we need to face up to it and do what we need to do to fix it.
To bring them up to standard. That impacts your future generations, too, what you're doing today in schools.
Okay, so, so what number do we want to deal with here as, before we move on? We want to do the 2.4 or the 1.3? All right, Bishop, you saying do both?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
No.
Which one? You don't care, you just want to do one? Oh, you don't want to do neither, okay. Ms. Randall?
Both are needed.
Both?
One.
One.
The superintendent's priority?
Superintendent's priority, okay, now I want to do both.
That's right.
Okay, so we got three, and two, and one, you want to do anything?
And Danny will be here shortly.
Okay, all right, anything else for schools? Where are we at with getting that insurance piece done? When is that scheduled?
I mean, that would pay for this, that's right, I mean, that would pay for this.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, we can shortchange them.
I'm gonna show me the money right now.
That's right. We can shortchange our young people.
Mercer has met with the schools, they have called and met with them a couple of times, they've given them information that they need clarity on. So as of, let me get to my note here, they have asked for additional information, so it's a work in progress, and they anticipate having something by the end of this week if there are no more questions about the data that they've received from them. So they've been in touch...
So by the end of this week, we'll know what the number is with the 3.3 versus whatever this bears?
I'm going to say they're going to be able to give you information based on the additional data that they've gotten from schools.
Okay. Remember, that's what, a half a year. A half a year, because the health insurance runs on a calendar year basis.
The 3.3 is a half a year?
No, sir.
So we will cover it for a year?
The number that he's doing, we'll get to the end of the week here, is a half a year, is what you're saying?
Well, you take the whole year and divide it by two, and that, I mean, you'll have the...
About one and a half.
One year.
Right.
It would allow you to do one of these two things.
Hold on, say it again. We're going to get something Friday from him, and that's going to be a figure that covers a whole year?
And you just divide it by two? Yeah.
Okay.
You look at...
Right, just for this front end, so we'll start at January, I got you, okay?
And remember, that's their decision, not, not, not ours.
I got you.
But it might be their decision to help us be able to deal with this decision.
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
Okay, so just hypothetically, since we don't have that, we had a 3.3 million dollar plug?
No, we, we had half of that.
And this number?
That's right. But remember how we built this budget? We didn't, we didn't pull numbers out of the hat, okay? In my budget narrative, I only, those were helpful hints. We went back and looked at the school board caffers to determine what the actual operating expenses were. And then we plus that up for inflation to get it to 46 million dollars that's in this budget. We're chasing rabbits when we say, you know, it's a million here, and 100,000, and 100,000, that's not how we came up with the 46 million. Those were suggestions on ways that we can get efficiencies.
I mean, you use actual expenses.
That's right. And you get those from the caffer, you can't get that from the budget that was given us, but you look at the caffers, the audits, yeah. And go back, we went back five years, looked at the numbers to try to understand what was truly operating expenses, because David has said that they've had some year-end surpluses that they did not put into, to operations. They went to capital and other expenses, like post-employment, yeah. And so that's how we got it to the 46. If you try to figure out how to get to the 46, taking half of the health insurance and 100,000 from here and 100,000 from there, you're not going to get there, because we didn't build a budget that way.
So when you looked at the actual expenses, and then you factor in inflation, you come up with 46 million, so that's what you've been actually spending over the last three or four years? How does that, so is the delta the surplus?
Teachers, and we're missing 90 paraprofessionals. They're working on that with us. You got, nobody will come to the understanding that we are missing all of our employees, we're missing almost 500 employees. So, well, this is what we operate on, and this is what we operate on with 500 people, less than we used to have, five, five or six years ago. We need to rebuild. We couldn't rebuild during those years, because with the state as unstable as it was, city funding has been more stable than the state, it hasn't been in the drop until this year. We haven't had this precipitous, what's recommended this year is that the biggest drop we'll have in the 10 years I've been here, if this goes through, because remember, that 50, that 46 million dollars, 3.4 million dollars is our money from this year. That's not city money. That's coming forward from us, a lot of it's probably state money. So you can't say the city would be funding as a 46, they're funding as a 42, a little over 42 something.
I get, so...
Which won't be here next year.
The reason why I was asking you on the, how you get with the escalation to 46, the 46 is actually what you need to operate without the pairs and without the teachers. So if we did the two...
That's what the city manager's saying, I'm not saying that, sir.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so I'm saying if we do the 46 and we add on 2.7 for the pairs and the teachers, now we're at. 2.7 for the teacher, if we do both teachers and pairs?
Teachers and 1.3.
Right, and the pairs were?
960,000. 960,000.
Okay, 2.3 then. Okay, well, you're not including these other. Okay, so that's 1, 2.3 million. So if we add 2.3 million on to the 46 that you came up with, we've got his actual, in your words, his actual expenses over the last several years, plus these two needs that he need now? If, am I saying that right?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm going to pass around this iPad. It's from the school's caffer that goes back to 2003, which gives their expenditures. Now, this is their caffer, not ours. And it starts with enrollment in 2003 at 15,028 and enrollment in 2012 at 14,256. And it shows in 2003, a teaching staff, again, this is the school's number, these are not from us. Teaching staff in 2003, 1,143. In 2012, 1,014.
1,014?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so you had a drop in enrollment, but you also had a drop in teaching staff. And I will very generously pass this.
Okay, that's 30. So from three to 12, we've dropped 30 folks. What was the actual, I wanted to get those actual numbers you get.
I'm going to pass it to you guys.
Okay.
That's.
My arms aren't long enough. I got something. All right.
All right, that's the enrollment. That's the teaching staff. This is 2003. And so these are the.
1,143.
Yeah.
And 1,1. Okay, got you.
So what are the actual expenses?
You move the damn.
Well, this is only.
Oh, okay, this is staffing. Okay. So you're showing that down 130.
Enrollment. 15,928. That's enrollment here. That's the teaching staff. Teaching staff was 11,43. Yeah. 43 and.
John, would you pass that down? We had to go through these figures. This was once my job to give you these figures.
Be careful, you don't know grant-funded positions are in there.
Oh, this is.
Easy to look at something quick and dirty.
2003, where's your 15,000?
15,000 on the bottom.
Right there.
15,928 is the enrollment.
Okay.
Versus. 2012, 14, 256, right there.
Okay, got it.
There's the teaching staff.
The teaching staff was 1.
1143.
143?
Yes, ma'am. And 1014.
Okay. 1014. Okay.
I'm not going to touch the screen.
That was my job.
This is the camera.
Get those budgets.
So you're talking, what is this, 130, 129?
120.
So you're down 129 teachers.
Right.
And you're down how many students? What's the difference in them two?
16, 172.
1,672.
Less students.
And that would be your students, right?
So it's a drop, right? So you dropped 129, 129 teachers and you dropped 1,672 students?
Students. Okay.
Okay.
All right. But the cost is still more.
You know, I'm not sure you got grant.
That would be with suppliers, insurers, everything else.
I didn't say that. I said, are there grant-funded positions in there?
Okay, so what about the expenses? I want, you say you did the actual?
Well, I mean, here.
What do you have there?
Expenditures in 2003 was 121 million, 734,064. So that's 1, 2, 1, comma, 7, 3, 4, comma, 6, 4, 0.
Okay.
That's 2003.
Okay.
And 2012, 1, 6, 3, comma, 3, 3, 5, comma, 7, 4, 6.
7, 4, 6.
2012. So that's 40, that's 42 million dollars. So that's a 42 million dollar increase. 42 million dollar increase over the same period where you had a drop of 1,600 students and a drop of 129 teachers? Is that what you're showing us?
Out of that 129 teachers, are any of those positions funded but unfilled?
I'm here without my finance people. I didn't come prepared to even speak to council. We went through this last year at this time where I'm being asked questions, but I'm not prepared to answer questions.
Right.
Without even having my finance people, I'm an instruction people with me. I have my HR people with me. It's easy to pull numbers off a caffer.
Any other questions or? Any other question? Okay. So I want to get back to one, I want to say it one more time. If your numbers are correct based on what you got here on the 46 million, and now you're saying these two other categories are urgently needed, which comes up to 2.3 million, if we add your actuals to his 2.3, we should be there? We should get what his actual expenses are plus the new funding for the pairs and the teachers? If I were to add them, so in other words, we'd be funding instead of 46 million, we'd be funding 48.3 million. Providing.
That's the math.
That's the math. Providing that your actual expenses off the caffer is saying that's what his actual expenses are plus the new requirements here. If I just merged them, we're talking about 48.3 million.
Several of you have asked me questions about the teachers aides, for example. You can't tell the school board to, we're going to give you this much money to hire teachers aides. You can appropriate your money by category, and that category falls into instructions. Instructions is everything that goes along with instructions. So the school board would have to set their priorities within the instructions slice of the pie. And I don't, I don't know what their priorities are. I would not even guess what their priorities are.
So from a categorical funding though, if we put the money in the category, they could do whatever they want. If the school board decides that we want to do half teachers and half pairs, all we do is fund the category.
Where's the money going to come from?
Right.
It's going to come from where we put the money in there.
Okay.
Well, we have to recognize the fact that schools have to be accredited and in order to get accreditation, the schools have to have what they need to operate with as well as the teaching staff and the materials for instruction. It's not going to just fall out. You're going to have to put certain things in place to get the results that you want.
I think this chart here, out of everything that we discussed last week, this accreditation piece, this chart shows that the progress that we've made from '01, '02 to getting all of our schools fully accredited and to now starting to drop off. My concern was what's causing that drop? And we know we're not just implying money, 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 but what are the other things here that is affecting this graph, starting to go in trend in the wrong direction? That should be a major concern for everybody in this room. And what can we do to help that besides putting money at it? And I think that was my question last.
I would say this, Mr. Mayor.
Environmental.
As I mentioned last Tuesday, we have tests that are more rigorous, standards are higher. The accreditation piece has come onto the scene about three years ago, almost unannounced by the state. From what we can tell, our families are under more stress in the city due to the economy. And am I going to sit here and say, well, that's a direct result of that money, you know, funding being taken away, which is primarily from the state until this year? Now, right now, we've got a, you've got a recommendation, the city manager, to cut us a real city revenue going in about over $5 million. I will say this, cutting our budget is not going to help that issue. And being able to put some folks back in the classroom, which we would have done, probably instead of going into capital, if we felt the budget would have stabilized in those years, it didn't. We did what we thought was the best strategy at the time. Is that the strategy we should be following right now? No. Things are starting to stabilize. State is not giving us really more money, little bit, but we have to use that for teacher salaries, so it really doesn't help our budget. It helps our teachers, doesn't help our budget. As we get stabilized, we need to start building back. We need to start building back.
Didn't you also use some federal money, the Recovery Act money from the president to help stabilize a couple of those years?
We had, we had.
And that money then has gone completely out?
We had stabilization, I'm trying to think what the term was, the cluck wheel term for.
Stimulus.
Stimulus money, thank you. And the stimulus money though, you can't really put into people because it's there for one year and it's gone. It's there for one year and it's gone. A lot of that money that people say, well, surplus is gone. It was there for one year and it was gone. As you cut teachers, getting ready for a lower budget next year, and you cut all kinds of personnel, you've got that year and it's gone. So what we did was we put in the capital projects because we felt that was a good strategy because they were at record low. These projects were coming in millions below what the architects said they should do. And now the city is not strapped with all of these capital projects for the school division because we've done them. A lot of these things, years from now, as I've said, people are going to come back and say, that was a good strategy, even though we've been lambasted for that strategy and called all kinds of names and dragged before the grand jury. Now people are going to say, that was a good strategy. Somebody knew what they were doing back in those days. But we have to start building back people now. We have to start building back people now. Slowly, understanding it can't be done all at once, but over time, we've got to stabilize things and start building back people into the school system.
You know, the thing that mystifies me in looking at the numbers from your own caffer is with enrollment down 11%, let's say 11 and a half percent, teachers down 11.3%, but expenses are up 34%.
I would have to look at that, Mr. Moody. You can pull all kinds of numbers off a caffer.
Well, they come off your caffer.
Well, when I look at the city's revenue caffer, you guys are up about $20 million over where you were four years ago. That's right off of your caffer. Means right there, $20 million just about projected.
We're talking about two additional million dollars. And before we leave the room, I'd like for somebody to say, okay, where's two additional million dollars going to come from? Finance people? Manager? Mayor? Because I don't advocate coming up with 2 million dollars.
Well, I just look at the criticality of, they need teachers, they need paraprofessionals, and that's going to help keep our schools where they need to be. You know, and if that's the case and they know this, then that's the area that the school board would concentrate on, staffing those positions. Because that's the critical area. If you don't have the teachers, then we're going to go downhill on that, what we had already began to do. Let me see that chart again. Yeah. The trend is going down.
Down.
It's going to continue that way unless we get a hold on what's causing it to go away. And to me, from listening, it's apparent that it's the lack of paraprofessionals and the critical teachers that are needed in key areas. Now, if I'm missing something, I can't see what it is other than that, but.
And to his question, the 2 million dollars or whatever it is, then if we elect to do that, then we need to go and carve it out of some of these other items that we got in here that we got allocated for funding. For instance? Okay. And anything else for the superintendent? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I may run a statement.
Yes, ma'am.
Listening to this discussion and I've heard it through the years in terms of funding for education. It took us a long time with a lot of research and everything else to get our schools and our students up to the point that they have come during the time that I have watched what has happened in transition. And at the same time, we know that education is not inexpensive. We've had to deal with rundown schools. We've had to deal with children that came in ill-prepared to go in the classrooms and the schools have had to pick that up, and that's when the early education program came in. We've had to bridge that gap. We've gone through a stage when we didn't have the materials to deal with and educators in the room, you know where I'm coming from, when you didn't have the books. You didn't have the books and you didn't have the money. We got the children up to a point. Then we looked at our schools. We've done a lot with a little bit. We have a lot to do because the deficiencies of our children that are coming through schools are the result of deficiencies that they have had into the high schools. Either we say we are committed to a total equality education for the young children or we're not. They are our future. And if we don't put the money in here now upfront, we're going to pay for it later in the jails and everywhere else. Because the deficiencies are there with the children and they are not going to be able to take on the jobs that many of you are sitting in there. So when you say children are our future, we have to believe in it and invest in them. And it's accountability, the same way that goes on in your home with your own person or family. And I look at these children at schools. These represent our future. And whatever it takes to get them to the top, we need to be pushing for it. They are not responsible for the fact that their parents did not have what they needed. But we are responsible to see that they are qualified to get a job where they can pay taxes and add into our conference. And whatever it takes, that's what we ought to be looking for and towards our future. I am an educator who advocates all children to have the rights to a quality education and we ought to be willing to fund it.
Just to answer your question, Mr. Moody, go to the budget here, go to page 3-8. And I'm looking at back where we were last meeting, I think when we started going through the increases here under the general fund.
Okay.
Page 3-8. And we show a, oh, thank you. Is that, this touchscreen? This is off the laptop? Okay.
What's that, man?
3-8. Yeah, 3-8, just in here, just all of them in general. I'm looking at the increases in each one of these areas. And I think we went through them, some of them, why the last time around, but just in the judicial piece here, public safety, some of the Commonwealth attorney and some of these areas, all of these increases, to me is just a matter of priority. Are the schools more important than these increases here or not? And if they're not, we don't freeze, we freeze these increases in these departmental areas and put the money in the schools.
We know, remember I asked about those, some of those increases last meeting? And I found out that some of, just the one I was asking about were state increases that was passed through money. When I asked that question, I thought it was our money, but I found out that it was When I asked that question, I thought it was our money, but I found out that it was a lot of state money that was passed through money. We were just, so, correct, what's the manager, from the answer that you gave me?
So, it was, all of these increases here, just on the judicial altogether, you're talking almost $700,000.
Those are the same ones I was questioning last meeting.
So, that $700,000 is coming out of the general fund?
No, these are general fund monies.
Right. Money coming out of the general fund, which is taxpayers' money, not state money.
No, it, remember, what goes into your general fund, all your property taxes, all your sales tax, and revenue from the state. It goes into a big bucket.
Okay.
And then, from that big bucket, it's appropriated by you all.
Right.
So, it's not, on the appropriation side, there may be local taxes, but there also may be state monies that are appropriated.
Right, understand. He was referring to a pass-through, meaning the state mandated something for these guys and they gave them the money.
Right.
They gave a mandate, but they didn't give money. Right? Or was it a mandate?
Well, no, they do both. We'll get mandates from the state that are unfunded, number one. Number two, we'll get, we'll get state monies that are designated for a particular purpose.
That's true.
But that, none of this was designated?
Well, this is all your appropriations right here. It doesn't show the source of the funds. It's not marked, like, of that, let's just take...
Okay, let's go to Commonwealth Attorney. Can we, what sheet is that broken down on? You've got, you've got 2.564 million going up to 2.9 million. That's, I think that's the largest increase there, about almost $400,000.
Remember your three-ring binder.
Uh-huh.
Go to that, please. Go to your second tab.
Okay.
You asked for a breakdown of all the component parts of...
The Friday edition. Right, that's the one we got Friday night, right?
All right. Where are you going now?
Page one, under the second tab, with your three-ring binder.
Yeah, you got constitutional officer, the breakdown, okay?
Okay, good.
All right, at the very bottom here, 2060, the item 26 of Commonwealth Attorney, part-time salary increase of $7,000, an increase in supplement of $90,000. What is that, an increase in supplement?
The supplemental of salaries.
Yeah, that's the city supplement to their state authorized salaries. And the Commonwealth Attorney had requested actually $180,000 in additional supplemental funds because he's found that it's been difficult for him to attract and retain qualified attorneys. And so, he's hoping to use that money to be able to get his salaries for those positions up to a more market-competitive rate.
You supplement...
Where is that 180 at? Where is that on this list?
The city manager didn't recommend the full 180.
Now, this is, these, you asked for what makes up the numbers on 3.8. That's why, okay, it does not include what the ask was that I did not recommend.
Okay.
I'd be glad to give you that, but that...
We've got enough, we've got enough problem with this one. We don't need to...
Yeah, okay, I see what you did.
But I think categorically, it's safe to say you supplement all the constitutional officer salaries.
Yeah. And the next item here says elimination of 5 percent vacancies. We're backing that out because there is actual no savings because we don't get, so, we're giving them that money this time around that they didn't have. So, why would we give them 94,000 and then give them the other 90? In other words, they're getting an extra 94,000 because we've kind of baked it in our past budgets and there was really no benefit.
What, now, what you were doing was counting on a 5 percent turnover vacancy in the Commonwealth's attorney, excuse me, and the constitutional officers, which was not there because you don't control...
We don't realize, right.
Yeah, it's in each one of them.
In each one of them.
Yeah.
So, what I'm saying, though, is that now, the 94,000, 516, that's, what is that now? That's more money for him to spend?
Well, it was always being spent.
Okay, we was just calling it wrong.
It was in the...
It's one of those budgeting...
Okay. So, that's, okay.
It's on each one of them. Look at the trash.
Yeah, I saw them, I saw them all. And...
But they all filled all their positions, so what...
Okay.
Yeah. It was a false saving, a false sense of security.
Exactly. That's a very good way to explain it.
So, and, yeah, I was going to say, the CIP is the other one. We go here, in the CIP, I think we're taking, if I look, about $4.5 million out of our fund balance.
You can't put CIP money in recurring, recurring money for the school?
Well, you can reprogram it.
You can reprogram it. I'm just saying, he, what he's doing now is he took, was it $4.5 million, roughly $4.5 million, out of the, um...
Fund balance.
Fund balance, to be able to take care of some of the shorter-term issues and...
Cash fund CIP.
To cash fund the CIP project, so...
That's what it is.
Understand?
And those are one-time expenses.
And one-time expenses, you can't give that to the school system for employees.
Yeah.
Because that's recurring. You can do it this year, but then you talk next year.
Been doing that for the last four or five years.
Yes, they've been doing it. So, why change it?
I'm just saying, that's not a plan.
You can do it.
It's never been a plan, but that's what we've been doing, Elizabeth, at least the last two and a half years that I've been here, using one-time funds to plug these holes.
That's right.
And the school system has been using one-time money, that, uh...
And keep building it.
I understand your logic, but I'm just saying that we've been limping along like
this here for a while with this one-time money.
That's right.
Matter of fact, we plugged our gap last year, I think about $8 million last year with some one-time funding.
Yeah, but we did, but we did it for things we didn't, we weren't, they weren't recurring, they weren't recurring expenses, though.
Last year, out of your fund balance, remember my presentation to you all, you appropriated $7.3 million out of the fund balance. $4.9 went to the schools. You cash-funded your budget, $2.4 for recurrent, you had to, you balanced, you used $2.4 to balance your general fund budget, but you only appropriated $7.3, of which $4.9...
Went back to the schools.
Went back to the schools. And $2.4 went to balance this budget.
Mm-hmm.
All right, we were able to not that...
Page you on.
You're not, it's not in that...
Not in the book.
Well, it's in the executive summary. This, I'm talking from my PowerPoint presentation when I gave you all, yeah, look at slide number 13, if you've got it before you.
What?
13.
That wasn't half that.
13 and 14.
4.9 for the schools and 2.4 to balance the GFC.
That's right. Now, look at slide 14. We're using 4.5 million to cash fund general fund projects that are one-time type projects. And we were able to cut a million, two, off the amount of money that you're using to balance the budget. The goal is to eliminate it. Remember my little analogy, that lifestyle, if you had a salary of $1,000 a month, but your lifestyle required you to spend $1,200, and you go to your savings account for that $200 each month, well, at some point in time, you run out of your money in your savings account. You either have to get a second job or you change your lifestyle. Second jobs for us are raising taxes.
So, John, this, this 4.5 and 1.2 equals 5.7.
That's correct.
Are you saying after the, if spending 5.7, there will still be 11.6 left in the overage?
That's correct.
After spending that?
That's correct.
That's the net?
That's correct.
We've got over $20 million in there above the $33 million that we...
No, sir. You don't.
We don't.
You'll have 11.6.
Well, if we go along with what you got here.
That's right.
Yeah, but it doesn't even get, even adding 5.7 doesn't get you to 20.
No, it doesn't.
I think according to our CAFR, we were at, again, we're going back to the superintendent thing, you can use these CAFRs, but I think our CAFR had a fund balance of 64, $64 million at the end of 2012 in the fund balance.
Look at slide 12. That gives you a five-year history of what your fund balance is. Those numbers are from the CAFR.
The $3 million. Right, and our 15 percent puts us at about $30 million, John, 30, 33 million. So, if you subtract that from the 53 million, it's the 20 million I'm saying that we've got above it.
Right? Based on fiscal year 1213, the 15 percent fund policy puts you at about $34,500. So, that, but then you also made subsequent appropriations from that fund balance during this fiscal year. So, and then, we also have to project what that 15 percent will be based on the new budget. And that's how we came up with the 11.6 million. And it's, you know, that's an estimate based on what we know so far.
Okay. So, if we go back to this sheet, we got to actually add 11 plus the 4 and the other, so we're just under $20 million.
Okay. Budget does, it works out $1.2 million that you were using from your savings account for operating expenses. And the goal is to get that down to nothing.
To nothing, right. And that's what I'm saying, but that's the school's goal, too.
To get it down, too.
Right.
But that's going in the wrong direction.
It's going in the wrong direction, yeah. There's no prohibition against using fund balance for operating expenses, except good sense.
And our bond ratings.
And our bond rating.
But you got to put some balance right in there.
The ones we got the...
Yep.
Okay. Well, we can hash that out later. We need to look and see, if we're talking 2.7 million, we got to go through it and look at all these items and see what we're going to do to replace it, or we're going to go in the surplus or general fund and get it and do one-time allocation. Speaking of that extra million, I had another question, if we can jump real quick. Does anybody mind me skipping over? The behavioral healthcare building. Last year, we went out on the street to get that built.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yes, we did. And we're using the PPTA process, and there were some issues and uncomfortability with us on council, as well as in the attorney's office with some of the issues that had arose. So, that whole thing was pulled back. Remember that? We had the funding for that building, and then we've got here an extra $1 million this year for the behavioral healthcare building. And I'm trying to understand, I think I saw 8.5 million dollars...
One of the responders to the RFP, he complained to us, raised the flag and threatened to sue.
Now, I asked the manager about...
And I understand it was rescinded.
Getting them all in the one room, you know, when he, when he came.
Yeah, no, no, okay, that's a second, their issue. I'm saying, why do we need another $1 million now if we had the money last year and then we were going out and we had three people that we were dealing with? I think one of the people contacted all of us about some letter they received saying he wasn't qualified and he didn't build the charisma hall and all these other places. And then, that coupled with some of the other issues that we, the manager pulled that back. My point is, if funding is in place and we already had funding for that, why are we now in this budget?
Looking.
Hold on, let me get to it.
You said it's a million dollars more than it was.
Well, here we are here, go to page 14-48. 14-48 is the breakdown of it. And we've got $8.5 million program for it. And up to date, we've already appropriated $7.5 million. So, this year, he's asking for another $990,000 to build a building that we already had the money for last year. So, my question is, why do we need this extra $1 million?
I think the question would be, was it really financed last year? Did you really have a good enough number that you could have built the building? I think that's a fair question to ask. We're going through the traditional way of designing the building and taking bids for it. And so, we'll know this summer exactly what the bid prices are.
So, what did we do last year? We were in that process.
No, you weren't. You were taking, you were doing essentially a design bill with that process. That's what you were doing. You were taking a public-private partnership. You had not designed the building.
Okay.
You were telling the contractor, "We want a building that looks like this."
Submit proposals.
Yeah, give us a price on it. You don't know what the systems cost. This way, you'll have bids that are broken down by system. You'll know, bottom line, on a competitive basis, what it will cost to build that building.
So, if we would have continued the process last year to build this building and the number would have came back 8.5 million and we only had 7.5 million, you'd have had that delta? I mean, because I don't think you go through that process without understanding whether or not you have funding to even go out and ask the market to come and give us prices to build this building.
Did you get a good deal in the courthouse?
And...
Depends on how you look at it.
That's relative. That's relative.
Well, sir, it's not. It's relevant.
Okay.
Relevant.
Okay.
You had no way of checking what not you got a good deal in the courthouse? Because that's essentially a design-build project.
It was all about the money. I think that's what made it work.
Yeah, and I would ask you, why did we do that? I mean, nobody can get cheaper money than you.
Relative, he said relevant.
So, well, they doubted us, water under the dam.
That's right.
So, you know...
But I'm saying the analogy, though, so, I'm saying, we went through this last year and I'm just trying to make sure, how did you come up with another $1 million here this year? What did you use to say, "No, it's not 7.5 million, it's 8.5"?
Working with the architect and engineer, and is where we are in the design process, what they cost estimate, just like you do on any project that you're going to build. You make an estimate that's more than educated. I gave you an estimate on what it would cost to do a recreational facility. It's from means construction, which amasses construction data, you know, nationwide, and then we'll normalize the data regionally. That's how you build a capital improvements program, when you make a, when you make a...
But didn't we have, I mean, I recall looking at the submittals, and I thought some hard costs were submitted for each of the designs.
Six and $7 million is the numbers that I thought.
Yeah, I have not studied that.
I believe they were, John.
Okay.
I think, I think some numbers were submitted. And one of the developers, I won't mention their name, that said, "Hey, my, my price is less, why aren't you going with me?" And the other guys, some of them aren't qualified. So, I think the manager at that point pulled them all back, and I'm going by my memory here, and said, "Okay, we'll, we'll just cancel..."
Everything out.
Put it all...
Now, Bill, were you involved, hold on, Bill, were you involved in that at all? Can you speak?
Only in the, only in the process of choosing the vendor.
Hey, Bill, will you stand up, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, only in the process of choosing the vendor, but not in the details that you're talking about in terms of the funding.
Were the hard costs submitted on the proposals? As I recall, they were.
Yeah, yeah, they were. Yeah.
I thought the highest number I saw was less than 7 million.
It's, at times past, I can't remember, to be honest with you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, we're taking bids this summer. What's our schedule? Refresh everybody's memory.
It's really based on whether they decide to move that piece that's on Portson Park in with this building, as is, we're, as is, we're planning to take bids this summer. If you decide to add that other piece that's on Portson Park, you move that out 30 days, so maybe late summer, fall is when we would take bids on the project. The estimates you have now is actually based on, the architect's members based on, BHS's programming needs, which have changed since the last time we looked at the proposals. programming needs, which have changed since the last time we looked at the proposals. This is an update version of the new cost for this facility.
And the point is, is that you're, you're months away from having what the marketplace will tell you, the cost of building that building. And what James just said is that, remember what the scope was. The scope was to build a building and leave, leave your, your clinic down here.
Yeah, the electrical disability program is gonna be over at Port Center, yes.
Okay. We were on a path to put that out this summer for bids. At one of your previous council meetings, you said, what would be the cost, the additional cost?
You solidated everybody.
We gave you that information.
Yeah.
Now, we'll add thirty more days. And so instead of taking money out of the project, if you move and enlarge the project, you need to add money to it. But we'll know in, by late summer, early fall, what the marketplace is telling us the cost of that building is.
I got you. But the whole purpose of me going down this road was, we've added a million here on a project that was supposed to have been already fixed and in the process of being bitted out last year, and I'm saying, this is an extra million dollars. I'm just using that as an example, going through this thing.
I think what he's saying, if you consider adding the, adding the Port Center portion...
It may absorb it.
That's why he added more money to it.
Right, but we just asked to do that last week. He brought this to us with an extra million in there. And my point is, how do you grow at an extra million dollars?
I'm gonna ask that question.
And that's what I'm saying, if it's an extra million here, it might be an extra million before we know it, we're funding our school.
That's right.
Could be. He could be right.
I was not here at one of these proposals in that building, so I can't tell you what the proposals were based on. I can tell you that it may not have been adequately funded, you may not have been getting the best price, but what James just told you was, the program needs a BHS change from that point in time to this point in time.
From last year. You just said in one year.
So that's, so that counts for somebody increase?
Yes, sir.
While we're on that, is there a, does it make sense to merge what you got over at the Port Center piece? 'Cause I know you do a different model there with some of the other pieces, and you got a warehouse over there and all that other stuff.
The, the design is gonna be the key, because the area that we use for the adults that we serve in our day program are unique and different than what would be an office complex building. So it really is gonna come down to how the design plays out in terms of accommodating the needs of that population. And the, the original idea was to have a campus block with the building containing the clinical and administrative functions, and then a separate building, which would be almost a warehouse-like complex that would be for the day services program itself.
Because you need that warehouse piece.
Yeah, but, well...
And what we're designing here is all professional building, and...
Exactly.
You don't wanna mix them, too.
Well, I think it would really have to do with the design. And I, you know, that's, that's why I think you all decided to have a, another look at what that would be like in terms of the development.
Yeah, but when I asked that question, I'm thinking, high level, why don't we bring everybody in-house? But if operationally, you need a separate facility because of what you're doing there. I'm saying, it's okay to share with us, no, Mayor, you don't wanna combine all that. We wanna keep where we at at Port Center and go with what we got here. I just wanna get that feedback, because I did, when, after that meeting, I went by your place and looked and saw the doors and all, and I was like, well, hell, you're not gonna have those doors over here.
Right.
I mean, we don't want that on County Street, because either County or High Street, you're gonna see that and it's gonna be visible. So unless you take the garage over there with the cars that they're working on there, unless you take that, you won't have that warehouse capability.
Right. And so it really has to do with the design and how, how it would be designed to accommodate both the needs of an office area and also the day program area. And as I say originally, it was to have two separate buildings. I thought the, the question was, could this be incorporated in one building? And that's why I thought we were putting the architect's role in that matter.
Yeah, but I wouldn't wanna waste the architect's time if we don't wanna put, I mean, if we're not gonna put warehouse space in the office environment, we're gonna waste a guy's time just 'cause council asked to consolidate it all. You agree to that, Mr. Chair? I think you and I were the ones talking.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we were gonna ask them a while ago, did it, did it make sense if, 'cause if, just in my mind, I think you was thinking the same way, if we got out on the one roof, but if that doesn't make, if that makes sense, then do what's best, what's best for you all.
What would you prefer, sir?
Well, I, I would prefer a separate building, and I'll tell you why. I think part of the issue is, we're talking about people who are wheelchair-bound, who have multiple disabilities, who are going to need a separate entrance to get in on a ground floor, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I've heard enough. I'm fine. Yeah, okay.
I still would like to examine, you know, if, to look at what we're paying down there for rent, and even if, even if they stay separate buildings at some point in time, if we...
Do something else.
Do something else, and have our own, own building for them. 'Cause we're, 'cause we're buying that building for somebody else.
Oh, yeah.
We could, we could buy it for them and it'd be theirs.
Right, right, right.
So, look at that, too.
Yeah, but I was concerned about the thirty days. I don't wanna waste thirty more days going back out.
I agree with you.
But you mentioned the design and the information last time around is ten years old. That's 'cause back here in two thousand and four, is when we, looks like we got the four and a half million from VML VACO.
Yeah.
So, the design we're working on now is based on what you looked like in two thousand and four? So does that thirty square foot, according to what I see here, is that thirty square foot old plan that we're dusting off, is it gonna satisfy what you need? Or do we need to look at it again to refresh the thing?
The plan has evolved through time. When I came here in two thousand and three, the amount of money borrowed was not adequate to fund the size building, and at the time, it was felt we needed a forty-two thousand square foot building to accommodate all the programs.
Including what you have.
Including what we have. And it was determined, and this is history, as I remember, determined that it was wiser to leave the day program over in Port Center and to build a separate building, which would be between twenty-eight and thirty-two thousand square feet, which would accommodate all our services, except that service and our opportunity health service, which is also a day treatment program over on Jamestown. So that, and then through time, there's been changes in our programming, so we've, we've had different services we're providing, but essentially, the thirty-two thousand square feet is gonna cover our administrative and clinical needs. And so that, that part seems to be consistent.
So if this thirty, it says thirty thousand, not thirty-two. But this thirty thousand here, when we're done and build this building, worst case, we're gonna have two buildings, Port Center and here, not fifteen other people somewhere else, 'cause we couldn't get them all in this brand-new building. That's what I'm saying, we can't have. We can't, we...
And I can only, I can only say what I know today. I mean...
But the answer is yes.
Okay. So the thirty thousand will house everybody except your Port Center piece?
These are pool bonds. The pool is VML VACO, but the same rules apply. You have to start construction within two years of the issuance of the bonds, or you get catty-cornered to the IRS. I come as deputy manager in two thousand and five. I'm getting calls from the bond council in two thousand and...
Where you at? Where you at?
Yeah, how come you haven't broken ground? Well, the reason was, because it wasn't enough money. The city did not issue enough money in two thousand and four to take, take care of the program needs of behavioral healthcare. And so this thing's languished since...
Ever since then.
Ever since then. This will move them from the professional building, which nobody needs to be in that area, to a, a facility that makes sense, and makes sense for the size and the program, and makes a terrific amount of sense for its location, because it's gonna be with social services, and it's gonna be with the Health Department. It was the concept of one-stop shop. And so what I'm, what I'm saying is that we're, we'll put this thing back on the same track that we had. We're on track to advertise bids early summer.
Okay.
And then we'll know precisely what the cost is. We'll have...
Okay. So I hope that we got us a million dollars in here.
And let me say one, you know, the construction industry's coming back. I mean, a year ago, and two years ago, you're getting very, very good prices. And we mentioned that with our utility projects. Remember, I, I had briefed you guys on, on the fact that we're, we might have an estimate of a million dollars, but the project's coming in at nine hundred thousand, and we're sweeping up all that? Well, the construction business is coming back.
So we should've acted on it last year.
Wish you had.
We've been talking about it for the last ten.
Yes, sir.
How about this, you know, there's nobody at this table that thinks that schools aren't important. That's, that's not a question. The question is, where can we get the money? How about a reduction on departments, all departments, including city council, to get us where we need to be? I don't know if that'd be a five percent across the board, and that would be everybody, constitutional as well. Where, where would that get us roughly? Carol, to you?
Might not take that much.
Yeah, I, I mean, there, there's expenses in the budget, such as debt service and other costs.
Well, I'm not talking, I'm, I'm just talking about...
We have to back out the nondiscretionary items to be able to figure out what an equivalent percent would be.
Yeah. I think that'd be good to look at, because I think, I think that's what it's gonna take. I don't think we're gonna find any one line.
Not one line on the...
It's not the way, too.
I think we...
Well, you could ask for some recommendations on how to get there. You tell me what the number is that you wanna give, and I'll give you a recommendation, give you several options.
Here was another one. I thought I talked to you offline, but I didn't talk to the, the group here. Last time, you gave me a figure of six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars is what it's gonna cost to implement that two percent for the police and fire.
Yeah, there's fiction out there that we're the highest paid in the region. We're not.
Okay.
We are absolutely not. In fact, this is a fresh survey done today, and we're fourth for fire recruit, fifth for firefighter, and fifth out of seven for police officers.
And paid?
And paid. And start, yes.
How do we go from one year to being the highest to now fifth?
I don't think we were.
You looked at that study. You never were. That was a comment. It wasn't the truth.
I've never seen anything that said that we were the highest.
It was said at this table one time by somebody important. It wasn't true. Once you got the report, that's not what the report said. And it became fact all over town, and it was never fact.
Be glad to pass this around.
Please, because the rationale was, the two percent last year, when we got into this same discussion, the manager said this was a, a flexible tool that allowed us to do a market study year after year to see just where we were with the other cities. And the reason why it was frozen last year is because they were at the top. And we all had a discussion that, hey, we should not be at the top.
That's right.
Okay, being the smallest city.
But he told you that. He told you the study.
And then, and so that too...
And the study came back and didn't bear out what he said.
Well, we, we need to get raises to all the employees this year.
All employees.
All employees.
The what?
We need to get raises to all the employees.
Including the step plan that you wrote.
Please, please, fire, general wage, we need...
Absolutely.
If we can do it, we give it to everybody. We don't need to, need to be...
Separating.
Calling people out, out of there.
That's right. Separate them.
And I, and I think we need to go back to...
Was it four years now?
Four years.
How many years?
Five years. But hold it, the general wage folks are the ones that never got anything.
Yeah.
And so...
Except for the bonuses, just on...
They got a bonus.
So, so hold it, we're now lumping everybody in, when we're trying to go and at least get the general wage folks something that we got, what, teachers, what, five years ago were the teachers, and four years ago, we went and got the police and fire study done?
They froze, they froze the step plan. They haven't got, they didn't get it...
Yeah, but they got the, the whole piece was done four years ago. They give them a bump. The general wage folks never got anything.
It was designed to get them a bump. That's correct.
Right. So what we're saying was, we wanted to give the general wage folks a three to five percent increase. We didn't say include everybody. We want the general wage folks just to make it equitable, because they've been four years with nothing.
Give me any instruction. We, we had an informal conversation around the table. I shared with you what my goal was. My goal was to leave, and remember, when we had the budget presentation back in January, I had a question mark there.
Mm-hmm.
And then, yeah, I had that purposely there, because I didn't wanna build up anybody's expectations, whether it was yours or the employees. But it was my goal to keep three percent on the tables long as possible.
Yeah.
Long as possible. We were able to put three percent in this budget. Now, remember on the step plan, the steps are, are not three percent, they're two percent. And it happens on the anniversary. So if your anniversary is June one, you sit for the, and the budget's adopted, you sit from July through June one before you get that two percent. So you get really one-twelfth of that two percent.
The bottom line is, if we do the steps, everybody gets a raise this year.
That's, that's exactly what it is.
So...
That's off the table.
That'll be off the table all the way.
But the fiction, and it's absolutely fiction, we're not the highest paid in the region.
Now, you're saying we're fifth?
Fifth.
Now, who can verify that?
Well, there, you got it in your hand.
Okay, yeah. What am I looking at here?
You're looking at today's salary survey that was done by calling every city and getting the information.
I show Virginia Pilot knows that.
Doing it the old-fashioned way.
They'll find a way to...
They'll find a way to twist it.
They'll find it.
Sixty, I'm gonna guess, and so Hampton is higher. So we're second. We're still above Norfolk, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach. How can that be? How you paying people more than cities that are three times your size?
Where are you looking at? It's not what I...
I mean, I'm just looking here at this one. Here, look at this, the max in the middle.
That's ridiculous. That's why I was... I think we're talking about two different things. I think you're talking about recruitment entry-level salaries.
I'm doing fine, sweetheart.
Oh, is that a copy?
And of course, many years in life.
I need my copy back.
You're not my partner. That's mine.
John, do you need some direction? When I mentioned...
Just go get find the number.
A number.
Yes, sir.
You, you need to show us what, what that would look like, where, where it would come from? Now, now, that's, that's the teachers and the paraprofessionals. But, you know, if he can't do it, the manager said, if he had to make a choice, it would be teachers.
Superintendent.
What I say.
Superintendent.
They're both the same.
Superintendent.
I got you switched out. I'm sorry, John.
The superintendent.
I'm sorry, Dave. Equal billing. Equal billing. But the superintendent said-
So it's a 1.2 versus a 2.3 poll? Is that what you're saying?
A 1.3 versus the 2.1.
Yeah, 2.3.
So are you going to do it both ways?
No, I think we need to give them direction to do one.
Yeah. Do the 2.3 and come back. Add the teachers and the thing.
But you can't affect any of these salary increases. You can't touch any of these, any of these salaries.
The raises are locked.
Across the board.
Across the board.
None of this is on the table.
You've got some options now. You know, you can-
You can't touch retirement planning, and you can't touch salaries.
That's right.
You know, you can take it out of fund balance. You know, you can do the cuts like Mr. Moody was talking about, or you can raise taxes. You got-
Well, you can.
I'm just saying. Those are your basic, your basic options.
That's right, but you don't want to touch your taxes.
You even have the bringers. You're going to go find 2.3.
You can't touch our biggest expense, which is salaries. You can't touch debt. You can't touch bonds.
Tell me, tell me the numbers again.
We can do accounts for Moody's.
2.3 million.
And you can't raise taxes.
2.3, you don't want it broken.
For the 18 teachers and for the 30 paraprofessionals.
There was-
2.3 million.
And we're going to have the school board pinky swear with us? Is that, that's what they say?
Whoa, hold on.
All right, okay. And to John's point, this goes into the instructional category, and we can't, other than making a public statement, hold their feet to the fire.
But we can ascertain from them-
Yeah.
How the progression is going on as far as the teachers.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm getting computer signals. Do you want me to look at just one number or two components that make up that one?
I want you to look at both numbers.
Yeah. So, give me those numbers. 1.3?
1.3.
Or 2.3?
Okay.
Because if your recommendation is to do cuts, then that's going to be significant. If you do across-the-board cuts, then that's going to be significant which number you use. If you don't cut all departments, so we need to know what that, what that looks like in each department. It's a different number.
Okay. All right. And, yes, sir?
The 2.3, is this adding to their budget?
Yeah.
Teachers and paraprofessionals.
And the powers.
18 teachers, 30 paraprofessionals.
All right.
All right, we're okay there?
No, I've got a question.
All right, okay, yeah.
Mr. Rowe, do you have their comp plan?
Their?
The school board. The CAFR. Yeah, the CAFR.
Uh, we got it online, and we can, we could actually pick it up on the computer.
Not to beat a dead horse, but can you go through the bottom incumbents? Tell me where those monies went from last year. Uh-
What page?
I'm on 16. Starts with fund balance. Can you just go over the bottom numbers? Here, you can have this one.
Now, Dave, you keep your, we've got the capability, because we're getting this offline. We've got the capability of going online and putting it up on the, so we all can see. Should not take that long.
No, we've got time.
I'm going to bring it up on the screen.
Why are they pulling that up? I wanted to just be thinking. I want to, if we could go through methodically this whole pension obligation bond piece, the 150 million to be able to get the plan from the 30% to the 80% level, and then there's another $25 million that we're going to go after to be able to eliminate the social security offset.
To be square with the Conflict of Interest Act, you've got to disclose every time, even when you're disclosing.
Okay.
You've got to disclose that you have anchors.
Okay, I'm ready for that.
Go ahead and tee that up for us.
I have a speaking part now. I prepared what I'm going to read to you all for tomorrow night's meeting, but in reviewing the conflict of interest-
Before you do that, for everybody who don't know what you're talking about on the table, can you just give a little?
I'm going to give you a little background. This was for tomorrow night's, but I'm going to try to paraphrase it for tonight. Under the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act, whenever you, members of a public body discuss or act on anything that, in which they might have a personal interest, they have to disclose that interest, explain what the nature of the interest is, and they have to basically certify that they're able to participate in the public hearing, discussion, or vote on the matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. So I'm going to read to you what I prepared for tomorrow night. It won't take that long. And then at the end, I'm going to ask each one of you to say for the record that, if you can, that you're able to discuss this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Okay.
First is, the matter under consideration includes the authorization of the issuance of pension obligation bonds to fund an increase in pension benefits for members of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System. And that will, as far as you all are concerned, that would be for the purpose of amending the city code to reduce or eliminate the social security offset for PSRS retirees. Each one of, each one of you are members, whether you're vested or not vested, of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System. Each council member becomes a member of the otherwise closed retirement system. The supplemental retirement system is composed of approximately 450 current and past city employees and officers. And your involvement is simply that if you issue, you're going to be discussing the issuance of bonds, the purpose of the issuance of the bonds is to fund the elimination of the social security offset. If the social security offset is eliminated in the future, when you all reach 65, and if you have retired, your pensions will not be reduced. So that increases your benefits, so you have a personal interest. Technically, the Conflict of Interest Act says the personal interest is $10,000, but we don't know, a lot of you all are, all of you all are very young-
That's right.
And will be here for many years, so you have the potential of, this may have the potential of benefiting you to the extent of $10,000. To be safe, I'm making this disclaimer, and I'm going to ask that the clerk ask, call you, basically call the role, and you all say whether you're able to participate in the discussion that's going to ensue fairly objectively in the public interest. And my vote is that you will be able to do that right now.
They have to dis-
Come on, George. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
I want to thank, yes.
You want to make it more difficult for me.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Summitt?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Most definitely.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
George, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Suppose one would want to opt out of being a part of that insurance, a part of that retirement system. Is that possible for a city council member to do that? No. Why not? Unless the council were able to change the code, you automatically, you don't have a choice of whether or not you're in the system or not. You're in the system. The code will have to be, would have to be changed to exclude people from the system, and I'm not sure that the code could be changed retroactively.
Okay, all right. If you want to get this, then we can go back there. I just wanted to tee that up while we were uploading this thing. So you want to get back to Mr. Meeks' is-
Mr. Rowe, can you explain the bottom, the bottom line item as far as the 8 million, the 700,000, the 2 million, the 1 million, the 7 million equals 20? Can you tell us if that's the money the school retained, or did it come back to the city from last year?
You go ahead.
Those are the fund balances that are retained by the school system.
All right, so-
Keep that light, please.
So that money right there was retained starting their new fiscal year. That money was, that's what they started out with before they were given their budget?
That's correct.
So they were, now, my understanding going through this budget is three items that is restricted that the city has no rights to. And that would be the school grants, the school food and service, and the textbooks.
That's correct.
All right. So that gives you a balance of about $16 million that could have came back, was a incumbency, could have possibly came back to the school, I mean, to the city, correct?
Right. I mean, that is the balance.
Right, $16 million. That's not including the OPEC that they paid 6.5, correct?
That is correct.
All right, so that would have been, gave them a total of about $22 to $23 million extra, correct?
Correct.
All right. So what we're discussing is, I want to make sure I wasn't here for the whole meeting, is we need to find another 2.5 million. So they spent their budget, so what you're telling me is they spent their budget for 2013, 1213, and they spent additional $16 million? That's why they're asking for this extra $2 million? I'm trying to get an understanding of 2.5. If they want to do it, I think they already have it. And now the education is very important. We have $16 million, and we're over here getting ready to cut all of our departments a percentage to give more to the schools. Now, look, I think the kids need the help, but I think they have the money. And right there, those numbers say what they started out with, and then they were funded, right?
That's the conclusion that I came to. When you go back and look at their CAFR and take out everything that's not related to operations, when you take out money that's been used for capital and for such things as post-employment benefits, that's how we built that budget.
All right. This right here, who came up with these numbers?
The auditor that did the CAFR based on the financial statement supplied by the school administration.
Did the city council or the city manager have anything to do with these numbers?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, so I'm not saying we don't understand the budget, but I think we got a clear and good understanding of the 2.5 that we ran, beat up all of our different departments to get. I think the money's there.
So you think they have that $16 million somewhere?
I think if they, what was their budget this year?
Yeah, where is it?
What was their budget this year?
I'm going to give it to you. We gave them $54 million last year. 49 in the initial budget, and then the first month of the year, you've made a supplemental appropriation of 4.9 million. When you add up all those sources, it's above 173, something of that order?
That 173 million is not including the 16.
Well, that's your fund balance.
Right.
Those are the balances at the end of the year.
Right.
Right.
Well, my question is, it's 173 plus the 16.
Unless they reprogram that money in their budget, which I would doubt-
It's 189 million. Is that about somewhat right?
They, it's well-known that at the end of each fiscal year, they've had a fund balance.
But before we cut all of our apartments by, I mean, the supplies that we need to run the city every day, if they have to dip in their pool for, we're only asking for one year.
And that money, I think I know where you're going. I understand what you're saying. The fund balance that's occurred over the last five years has been spent. It wasn't re-appropriated or, so it did not go into the bottom line of the schools.
Right.
So you didn't get a chance to pass judgment. The public didn't get a chance to pass judgment on that money. You might have said, it's a great cause, let's put it to that purpose. But there has been, there's been also discussion about all that money's been accounted for, all this fund balance. I'm not sure that you've seen an accounting of that money, so I can't tell you what that money was used for. But factually, the fund balances that you see here show up in every CAFR for the last five years. So they ended up with surplus money, which was, did not come back to the city, that got spent by the schools. And so in order to come up with my recommendation to you, we went back and looked at the CAFRs, looked at what those fund balances were, made, tried to make some analysis where they used that money, because it didn't go back into instruction. It could have been used for instruction, but it didn't. That's how we developed the 4.6 million dollars. And my recommendation to you is that, as I said in my budget memo, is that we think that's sufficient to continue to operate and sustain their operating budget, based on looking backwards five years.
Let's say, I'm just, if we go down the road and we get to the last quarter, and they're running short, and they come to you and say, look, we're low, we're short, is it something that we can pass at that time to fund the rest of it?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Because if we're going to categorize and budget and appropriate in our funds quarterly, I'm not saying, I'm just throwing this out. We can monitor what they're, you know, and where they're at throughout the year?
You can.
And before you came in, go ahead.
I hope I made sense. Let's, what's happened over the last five years, let's say that each of the last five years, we've ended up with a fund balance of $5 million. And the next year, without re-appropriating the money, we spent the money.
That's right.
And you, that's, that's what's happened here.
It's gone. It's not there.
And so in order to try to distill everything down to actual numbers that were spent on operations, that's what we did, and that's how we came up with the $46 million.
That's what I was trying to say earlier, when I said, wouldn't you start your budget with your teachers, because your salaries are always your biggest expense, whether you're running a school system, a city, or a tax agency? How come those teachers weren't in the beginning of this budget anyway? That's what I was trying to say.
And you said the budget was created in December, and Dr. Fisher and through some other things came up with these needs based on an assessment after they built the budget. But to your point, what we discussed, the 2.3 million was taken in consideration of exactly what you just discussed. And if Mr. Rowe's $46 million is based on looking at those actuals, then what's not in there is the funding for the paraprofessionals and the 18 teachers. So we're saying what he went with will go with plus this.
Yes.
So what you just made an analogy was, there's $16 million in there that's got spent, or you're saying they got it? I mean-
It's so, I mean, I'll give you a good example. End of the year, when you do your taxes, if you came up like this, what would you pay taxes on? No, that's a direct question, businessman to businessman. What would you pay taxes on there, Mayor?
Okay.
I didn't hear the answer.
What was your point?
They speak a little louder.
What I'm giving you is, this is our general fund, and you can see where most of your money is in the general, is, yeah, it's salaries. And so, most of their money is going to be in salaries too. So to answer your question, Elizabeth, yeah, you would build your budget from the salaries first.
Yeah, you do.
I don't know where the money is. This, I mean, if I, if this is my tax return, the money would be at this column, just like the mayor. He owns his own business. He knows the hurdles when you're in business for yourself, what you have to do. And if they weren't accurate, everybody would be getting in trouble. So when they give me numbers, and I'm basing my opinions by this right here, that's how I read it. So I don't want, you know, everybody comes up, oh, look, he's this and that, but that's how I came up with my collusion. Yeah.
So the 16, what are you saying, the 16 million? Are you think they got it, or they don't?
No, I think the 16 million had to be in the, had to start at the budget. This is what they had to end of the fiscal year.
What the school board does, what the school system does, they, at the end of the year, they will encumber funds.
Right.
Now, the only way that we encumber funds, let's say we order a ream of paper on June 15th. It comes on the 21st of June, but we don't get the invoice until July 15th.
Right.
We encumber those funds because we have a bona fide purchase order for that. But my, my understanding from David is that they would say, we need roof replacements, and they would encumber the funds without having the paper in place. And David's here, and he could sit at the table and have his own voice, but we went through a pretty detailed discussion on that. So that's-
Tracking the figures.
That's what happens with some of their fund balance. It gets encumbered in big chunks for broad cat, for broad things.
Without a purchase order.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's not good. Can you go to 47 and read number four for me?
That's not, that's not the way to run this.
Give us a moment.
All right. Yeah.
The general fund and special revenue fund have a legally adopted annual budget. The general fund and special revenue fund budgets are adopted on a basis consistent with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States, except for the recognition and encumbrances and inventory as expenditures. Budgets related to the school construction fund are adopted on a project basis.
Now, the incumbent funds, they first come back to the city, or the school board first keep.
Encumbrances are by definition-
Encumbrances are by definition not expenditures, and the law requires that unspent funds revert to the city for reappropriation. So I think there's a question as to whether those amounts that are encumbered really should come back to the city council for reappropriation.
Isn't that by a formula?
The city council in two thousand and one adopted a resolution that said, upon a written report and a written request from the school board that outlined specific projects that they wanted to use remaining funds for, council could then allocate those funds twenty-five percent to the city and seventy-five percent to the schools. But that is based on a written request, and it's also based on council's approval of the expenditures. And that resolution is not part of the city charter. It could be changed by council at any time if council wants to do something differently with how you handle unspent year-end funds.
Maybe this one helps, too.
Would it clear... If we got the incumbents, I'm all... The reason I ask, we got the incumbents every year. Would this be an issue? Wouldn't we just start at a clean slate if we make sure we got incumbents?
Well, it's not good financial practices.
Right.
In fact, it's really kind of counter to any good financial practice to say, "I want to carry over this money, so I'm going to encumber the money." It's gotta be encumbered for a bona fide reason. And like what I just said, you've ordered something in one fiscal year that you don't get billed for in the next fiscal year. You have a bona fide purchase order for it, or contract. You encumber those monies because it's technically an expenditure of that year.
And I would add, too, that both the city and the schools have to follow GAAP and our...
GASP.
Yes, GAAP and GASP. And we have a forty-five-day accrual period. So within that forty-five-day period, the vast majority of items that were legitimate expenditures of the prior year that you ordered before the end of the year, you're gonna get the invoices for those, and that would be accrued back. So there really are very limited situations where you would have an encumbrance that should carry on beyond that forty-five-day period. And the city doesn't do encumbrances at year-end except for capital projects. So if you look at our CAFER, you'll see that we don't have the encumbrances in the general fund.
Well, I mean, what... And maybe this is a legal question. What can we do in appropriating our funding to ensure that the general accounting practices are followed? Because it sounds like they aren't.
Okay, I thought we've already taken care of that.
Well, yeah. You're taking a step towards that by doing categorical...
Okay.
Funding by category.
So anything in the past now is in the past, so we're starting a new picture.
Will that indeed solve that? It will add a little bit more transparency to the process. But will it solve that issue?
Wouldn't that be up to us to make sure? Because if we talking about what the grand jury did and all that, it's our responsibility to make sure it happens. So we have oversight of it. Am I wrong in that?
You have oversight in the sense that you know how the monies are being spent by category. If they need to transfer money from one category to the next, they have to come to you for that permission to do so. You've gotta have the capability... You've gotta approve transferring it from instructions, let's say, to transportation, or from transportation to food services. That is moving outside the appropriated category. It will go a long way to solving the issue. But can they encumber... They still could. ...the money within the category... They still could. ...without a purchase order? They still could. You don't have any oversight. So that doesn't resolve it?
John, not to put you on the spot, several weeks ago was email passed that came to the school board about the seven hundred thousand dollars. Will you shed light on that?
Hey, 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 hold on, hold on. Let's look.
I'm just showing a way they can add the one...
No, no, Danny, let's don't go down that rabbit hole.
I agree.
Let's keep this where it's supposed to be, on the straight and narrow. We had the discussion last week, and it went, and the room blew up. Okay? So I'm not... I'm not gonna sit there and have that happen tonight. So let's keep it on the straight and narrow. Keep focusing on where we are, and once we get through everybody's questions, we go and sleep, and we'll come back another day, but we're not gonna do it tonight.
I want to make sure that we're not having this conversation a year from now on money within a category that's been encumbered with no justification. So what can we do as a council to make sure that doesn't happen anymore? We need to write in big, bold font, "The end." What I would recommend that you do is have a conversation with the school board, which you ask them to develop an encumbrance policy that's consistent with both GAAP and GASP.
And the city.
And the city. And what that does is... Does exactly what Carol says. You've got forty-five days. Governmental... The difference between governmental accounting and the accounting that you guys are used to is that we use fund accounting. We also work on a modified accrual basis, which means that when you accrue the expenditure back to the year, that you incur the expenditure regardless of when you get the invoice. And that's why that forty-five day is really kind of a bright line, because you don't wanna be, say, "Here comes December thirty-first, six months later." That doesn't make any sense. That's not an encumbrance. I don't know if any business is gonna give you a six-month grace period on paying a bill. What is the burden of all small businesses is cash flow. So they want to get the bill out as quick as they can. They want that bill paid. And so that's why the forty-five day is reasonable. Anything greater than that is... Puts it like an expenditure in the next fiscal year. Well, is there a consensus to formalize that request?
Absolutely.
I'm in favor. Formalizing a policy based on those standards.
Asking them to...
Define the encumbrance.
Follow the general accounting practices regarding encumbrances. Is everybody's... Looks like everybody's in favor of that.
Definitely.
Can we formalize that? And communication to the school board?
Don't you think we need to discuss that a little bit more?
No, I don't even think that... Bishop, I think that's... That's not out in left field. That's standard accounting practices.
Well, when I say discuss it, I'm talking about, once we get everything lined up the way we've been discussing tonight, then get those things in place before we pass the budget completely.
Well, I think we need to have that understanding with them in a formal communication from this council, even before we approve the budget. This is serious stuff. We don't need to be...
Oh, yeah, I know it is.
We don't need to be sitting here a year from now, you know, pointing fingers.
And it seems that we go in circle with the same issue every week, and so... And we're trying to move ahead.
Well, we got a consensus to formalize it.
Need to be a little...
Yeah. Yeah. On behalf of council. What, right?
You okay with that, Mayor?
Sure.
We can't make them do anything.
No. It's a request. Absolutely.
They're elected officials.
You're dealing with two elected boards.
I didn't say... I said request.
They're elected board, too. They're elected by the people.
Okay, Mayor, so the manager's gonna bring us back some recommendations?
Two point three and one point three.
Okay.
All right, so we done with it? You done there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry I was late. Y'all probably covered some of the stuff I went over.
Okay. Oh, okay. Now, pension obligations. We got a two-parter, and just for y'all, I think John has probably called most of you because I asked him prior to him and George, why were we, first of all, lumping both of these into one category? I understand going out in the bond market, we wanna get one hundred and seventy-five million dollars to cover both, but I thought they were two separate issues, and I thought they needed to be separated because we're going to get one hundred and fifty million dollars to be able to shore up the pension plan or the fund from a roughly thirty percent level to eighty percent level. And that, what we think the estimated cost is gonna be one hundred and fifty million. And then we wanna get another twenty-five million dollars to be able to eliminate the social security offset, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so just from itemized or details perspective, I said, "Why don't we break those two items out, whether we agree with them or not, but not lump them in so the public or anybody else thinks this is an all or nothing deal because they're two separate matters, correct?"
Well, but the bond buyer doesn't care.
Understand.
The bond buyer sees these as pension obligation bonds.
Right.
They represent liabilities that have either been incurred or will come about. And so the bond buyer doesn't get into the minutia of...
The details of how do you break it out? I got you.
So you have, before you tomorrow evening, you have a public hearing on the issuance of the bonds, and then you have the instrument that you consider, in our case, it's a ordinance that authorizes the issuance of the bonds. We're not gonna issue the bonds until around the first week or so in June. We got some work to do before we get there. We gotta go to the bond rating agencies and get our credit score, so to speak. We gotta get our bond rating for this issue. We plan to do that in May. So we plan to sell the bonds in June, within the first two weeks, sooner than later, and then close on the bonds the last of June. So if you're trying to bifurcate the issue, the market's gonna have a negative reaction to that. They don't like to see you come in and out of the market very quickly. They really look a stance at that. So it needs to be one issue.
One issue.
One issue.
All right. Now, secondly, walk me through, if you would. I'm trying to understand, we have our ARC that we pay each year. Last year, it was seventeen million. I went down today just to get some numbers, to get refreshed. We're bumping that up to nineteen million this year. Okay? So we're paying into this fund nineteen million, and I think last year, we paid out twenty-five million in benefits. So we roughly lost about seven... Close to seven million dollars because the market was kaput last year. Okay? When we go and bar this money, we go bar this one hundred and fifty million dollars, we're gonna still pay the nineteen million dollar ARC, even though we've barred this money to get the funding level from thirty percent to eighty percent. We're gonna still, we as a city, pay the nineteen million. And how do you handle the debt service? Or are we gonna do that? Walk me through that because the other piece was...
The ARC becomes your debt service. Remember the briefing that we had with David Rose here? The ARC becomes your debt service, and it becomes fixed from here on out.
So is it nineteen fixed for the next twenty years?
It's more than nineteen. It's two point one minus twenty-one million. But that's fixed for twenty-four years. No longer will you be growing from fifteen to seventeen to nineteen to twenty-one.
Right.
Because you have the law of big numbers. You will have one hundred and seventy-five million dollars that you will have invested in the stock market.
Right. But of that twenty-one that we discussed, two million of that is for the offset.
Right.
Okay? So we're gonna bar twenty-five million dollars to take care of the social security offset, and that's gonna cost us two million dollars for the next twenty years.
That's right.
And then we're borrowing one hundred and fifty million dollars for the pension, for shoring up that plan, and we're gonna be fixed at nineteen million. So we're at nineteen now, and so the hope is, we bar this money at four or four and a quarter percent and hope that we get a return on the investment in the market greater than that to be able to what? Do what with that delta? Put that back in to try to get the plan from eighty to a hundred percent?
All you need is twelve years to meeting your goal at seven point two five percent to get a hundred percent.
Understand.
Okay.
If we get that, I mean...
Pardon me?
I say if we get that. We just redid the formula to get down to seven point two from eight percent because we had never been hitting that number in the last...
That's not true.
Right?
No, sir. That's not true. You've had returns in two thousand and seven, for example, you had returns that were just shy of sixteen percent in two thousand and seven. And so over the course of that twenty-four-year period of time, you're gonna have...
Ups and downs.
Ups and downs. You're gonna have times where you'll be making returns that are in the double digits, just like you did in two thousand and seven. You'll have times that you're in the single digits. There might be a time when you actually lose a little bit because of the way the market is. But you're dealing with the law of a long time, and having that long time smooth out the ups and the downs. And remember the presentation that we gave you? They went back to nineteen seventy-four and did a five-year rolling average and a ten-year rolling average. And you know what that is. You take each year, you drop off the oldest year, you add a new year. And consistently, the returns were around ten percent. So if you're looking backwards, now, there is some risk at that. I mean, to look back two and a half decades, to predict two and a half decades out, that's risk, but that's a good experience. The reporter asked me today, "What happens if council decides not to pay the debt service ten years out?" I said, "This council has never, never, in recent history, walked away from its obligation." So I think the history of both the market and your... The way you legislate and do your business is, it's fair to use that to predict the future. But we... This analysis that we did, and it's conservative, remember, where we came at four point five percent? We told you that Baltimore County, which is a little bit stronger rated than ours, back three months ago now, four months ago, got rates at three point four nine percent. So anything that we get below four and a half percent, we improve our numbers. But this analysis had it all in stocks, had it blended stocks and bonds. It was quite detailed. And the... On the five-year average, the return on a hundred percent stock was eleven point four percent on five years. That's a five-year rolling average since, starting in nineteen seventy-four. And it's better at ten percent. So I can't tell you precisely what, when we look back twenty-four years out, what the total rate will be, but I think it's a pretty good bet that we'll be at seven and a quarter return on the average.
Averaged out over there.
Yes, sir.
So, go ahead. I got a couple of questions.
I was gonna ask you, other half of that coin is inaction. Won't you paint a picture of inaction? Inaction is this, okay? You got eighty-nine million dollars against over two million dollars worth of liability. Now, a bad day, and that's a metaphoric day, a bad period of time in the stock market will negatively impact that eighty-nine million. It will shrink it. And the mayor just gave you the example that we're paying out more than we're paying in. So if we're paying out more than we're paying in, and here comes the market and whacks our investment, and we lose ten percent, we're down to eighty. If we lose fifteen percent, we can do the math. If we don't do anything, we run out of cash in eight years. Eight years. Now, the benefit to this is that you take the burden off the taxpayers. One of the statistics that we don't talk about too frequently is that twenty-five percent of our population is a... is age 55 and older. Remember the term fixed income? When you retire out, whatever year that is, you end up on a fixed income. And so, a quarter of your population is on a fixed income. And I think it's admirable for you to be concerned about the tax burden that you put on not only the total population, but the people who have no chance of increasing their income. And so, if you don't do anything, you're obligated to pay this pension. And so, where are you going to get the money from? You're going to start getting it from the taxpayers. And you're going to have to start pounding money on the table and it's going to come from the tax rate. And so, what this does, it freezes the amount of money that you're going to be asking the taxpayers to put up for the next 24 years. It's taking the bet that you can borrow the money at 4.5% and that you'll earn 7.25%. And that in 12 years, you will have gone from 80% to 100%. And you find comfort in looking backwards. Now, just 100% stock, now, you probably wouldn't use that mix. You would blend it. You'd have stocks and bonds and treasuries. But 100% stock, looking back to 1974, was 11.4%. On a 10-year rolling average, it was above 12%. Now, you're going to be in this thing for two 10-year periods. You're going to be, for two and a half, you're going to be in this thing for two and a half, I mean, two and a half decades. And so, as we've talked about before, if there's ever a time to do it, now's the time because you're at risk of being insolvent. Any bad period of time in the stock market could really make us insolvent on these two Then, you would have to turn to the taxpayers to say, pony up. We're going to have to increase taxes in order to meet our obligations. With this, you fix it. You fix it without a tax increase and you're good for the next 24 years.
Compelling reason to do it tomorrow night.
Yes, sir.
Which is, right. But, and the reason why I'm asking and going down this road is because if we do that and fix it for that one-dimensional piece, that's great. What does incurring all of this debt on us do for our ability to be able to now go out next year, the year before, and borrow more money? Because then, the credit rating folks, and we asked them when I went to New York last year, they said, they don't care. Debt's debt. Once you get to that ratio, then you're going to penalize yourself or you're going to get downgraded if we now have some other things in the city that we need to go get funding for and can't because we've maxed out. And my rationale there is that, is it smarter to, if we're going from 30% to 80% to maybe instead of borrowing 175, to borrow half of it? Or tell me the impact of what that debt's going to do, say, in another year, we had, last year, we had a presentation from the school, Churchland High School.
That's right.
$16 million because of the ventilation system is in shambles, okay? And where are we going to get that money to do that?
Okay.
That's just one example. You see what I'm saying? What does it do to our ability to borrow funds?
I'll answer your question.
Okay.
If you only borrow 75 million, you're kicking the can down the road. What you're saying is that we're not going to solve this problem. We're going to let somebody else try to solve it.
Okay.
Okay? So, you haven't done much. Remember, again, when we gave that presentation, and I think it was January 28th that we gave this detail, that ended up with this document that you all got? We talked about what your constitutional debt limit is. Your constitutional debt limit is 10% of your total assessed value. Okay? This doesn't take you to that limit. We have been issuing bonds for utilities as a double-barrel bond. Double-barrel is an old term that says that although we, they look like revenue bonds because we're paying the debt service from the revenue, we're putting the pledge, the full faith and credit of the city. What we're telling the bond buyers is that if the revenues fall short, we'll raise taxes. Well, your utility fund is healthy. You make a good return on your investment. So, now's the time to look at really, truly, moving from having these as double-barrel revenue bonds to strictly revenue bonds. Revenue bonds do not, do not count against your debt limit. And the reason is, is that the bond buyer knows that all you're doing is pledging the revenues. And that if the revenues are there, that's great. They can take off their coupon if they like.
So, there's no fear in the out years of us being penalized or not being able to go out and do some of these other things because we've incurred this 175 million dollars?
The downside of doing nothing is everything that I talked about there, plus getting a bad credit score. Because the bond agency, agent, bond rating agencies are going to look at us and say, you have a fiduciary responsibility to make these retirement systems whole and you've done nothing. And so, that's not good financial wisdom on your part. We think that's risky judgment on your part. And we're going to reflect that in this, the bond rating we give you. So, it can hurt us going forward for whatever project we issue the bonds for.
So, as it stands now, if we go forward like we are, we need to find an additional $2 million per year for the next 20 years to cover the whole piece. We're going from, we went from 17 million last year in an ARC to now 19 this year. And starting next year, we need to find another $2 million.
Okay. The way we're looking at the bonds, we may capitalize, remember, we talked about this. It's not unusual to capitalize one year's worth of interest and principal. Okay? You don't pay, it's like a house mortgage.
Like skip mortgage.
You skip a month.
Yeah.
Well, in this case, you skip a year. Okay? But that money's going to go back into the system anyway. If we capitalize the principal and interest, that's just adding more money to the corporates and we're running those numbers now to see exactly. And that's why it's not to exceed...
175.
175. For a couple of reasons. One, you don't say today that you're going to sell the bonds on the 12th of June because you get, it's looking at who's in the market. You don't want to go into a market where there are no buyers. You don't want to go into the market where there are a lot of sellers. And so, it's a buyer's market and they're going to not give you a good interest rate. You've got to pick a day that is, that seems to be right, right for you to get the best interest rate. And so, as we get close to June, we're going to be watching the markets very closely. We may say that we're going to the market on the 10th of June and find out that that's not a good day and just pull out.
Pull back, right.
And go another day. So, it becomes a function of what interest rate you get and then what are your closing costs will determine the total amount that we close on. Because what you do, remember, and we've done this for ages as a city, we wrap up our closing cost into the bond issue.
Right.
As part of your bond ordinance.
But worst case, we're still looking at finding $2 million. If we stay flat, assessments and everything are flat.
That's true.
We need 21 million instead of 19.
No, not all of that 2 million is general fund because, remember, the PSRS employees are spread out over enterprise funds, which is public utilities. So, you would, the general fund impact would be much less than that, probably 900,000 to a million at the most.
And we've done that split.
Okay, okay. You answered my question. That's good. Okay. All right.
And again, a reminder, y'all, three years ago almost now, to do away with the offense, we're implementing what was the council's directive, which was, Mr. City Manager or City Manager, get this done and work with the Retirement Board to get it done. And so, we've been working with Retirement Board. He wears two hats. He's a city employee, but he's also the Chairman of Retirement Board.
And we talked daily. Did you follow me? No, no. Phil followed me and then you took over at the field.
John, you're to be commended for coming up with a plan to deal with this train wreck.
Yeah, you know, I think it was Mr. Moody and Mr. Rando and part of Ms. Simmons were the three that were here when that promise was made, but it still was a promise made by the Portsmouth City Council. So, that, so we're here now, so we need to take care of it. We got the opportunity. Money is cheap and, you know, just people gave the best years of their lives to the city of Portsmouth. We need to make sure there's some retirement money there for them in the out years. So, let's get this done.
And we can't afford the option of doing nothing.
That's right.
All right, any other questions? Okay. All right, I got one other, but we can save that to the next time. We want to talk about recreation centers and why, hold it, why the money is so cheap right now. I'm glad you walked right into that because I asked you, I wanted you to step in it because if it's that cheap and we know this need we have in this city, we need to go get money to be able to build a couple of them.
Yes.
And if it's as cheap as it's going to get now, we need to look at doing it now and not waiting the next week. But we'll end that tonight. Just think about that tonight if you will.
We got a wonderful recreation study that we paid...
We got to work on it.
We paid $69,000.
Already looking at it.
All right, very well. Okay, we adjourn and thank y'all very much.
He did.
He did it at the very beginning of the meeting.
May I remind you that we will be meeting tomorrow night at 5:00.
Okay.